Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This evening, we have with us Connor and Alexander Grinnell, Charlie Godis, Griffin Chaney, and William Hawke, and they are going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, gentlemen. Thank you so much. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Supervisor. Trustee Nevers.
Present.
Trustee Bassano.
Here.
Trustee Smith.
Here.
Treasurer Goodhue.
Here.
Clerk Posey, here, and Supervisor Dunn.
Here.
Trustee Krizminski is absent.
Thank you. In case there are any roll call votes this evening, could we have a motion to eliminate Mr. Krizminski's name?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to refrain from calling Trustee Krizminski's name in a roll call vote.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Thank you. Next, we have approval of agenda items with any corrections. Ms. Posey?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have two proposed add-ons. One under consent, item 7(c), request to purchase absent voter envelopes. Another proposed add-on under Engineering Department, item number 19, request to approve extension of time for landscaping for a home assisted senior living. That's all I have.
Thank you. Would some make a motion for approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by?
Bassano.
Mr. Bassano. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Those agenda items are approved. Next, we have approval of the bills. There are two bill runs, as usual. If you wish an item removed, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bill runs as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith to authorize payment of both bill runs. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the previous meeting minutes from November 6th. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make one correction. The adjournment time for that meeting was actually 7:31 instead of 8:31, so we will make the correction, and then I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from November 6th as amended.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers to approve the minutes from November 6th. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The consent agenda items are up for you to approve this evening. If you wish an item removed for discussion, please indicate so at this time.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Posey to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments, but before we do, I would like to ask one of you boys, are you here for a badge of some kind? Which badge is it?
Building.
Yeah, come up to the podium.
Building a Better World.
Building a Better World?
Yes.
That's wonderful. Thanks for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
Okay. Very well, we will move on to public comments, and this is on agenda items only. If you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium, state your name. Remember, there's a three-minute time limit.
Our jury address is unfollowed with the clerk's office regarding item number 11 on the agenda. I feel that Hall Road is a commercial corridor, should remain a commercial corridor, now changing into a high-rise multifamily, high-density site. Hope the board votes it down and keeps it as a commercial piece of property. Thank you.
Anyone else? On agenda items only. All right, seeing no one, we will move on to new business. The first item is a request from the Water and Sewer Department to pay construction estimate number four, sanitary sewer rehabilitation by FCIPP and SCIPP lining project. Mr. Wangland.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and Board members. As the supervisor has already stated, this will be pay cert number four. This will be payable to Incitroform Technologies in an amount of $60,366.04. Water Sewer, as well as Engineering, have reviewed this, and we are recommending we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wangland or Mr. Van Tiflin?
Madam Chair, hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the pay construction pay estimate number four for the 2019 sanitary sewer rehabilitation by FCIPP and SCIPP lining project number 0249-0163.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next one is also a construction pay estimate. This is number six for sanitary sewer cleaning and investigation. Mr. Wangland.
Thank you, Supervisor Dunn and Board members, and this is similar request. This will be pay cert number six. This will be payable to Pipe Tech Infrastructure Services in the amount of $37,959.00, and both departments have reviewed this and recommend that we move on this, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wangland?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we pay construction pay estimate number six in the amount of $37,959.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Human Resources Department has a request to purchase applicant pro applicant tracking and onboarding software. Mr. Sardi.
Madam Chair and members of the Board, is this Board as well where our department's been looking at various means of implementing new software for many of the services and functions that we perform? So with that, we've been looking well over a year now for a reasonably economical program that allows us to do a couple things, and one of them would be, if nothing else, an online digital form of an application, and this program allows that to happen. It also provides us with information from the applications that are being presented. It's all electronic in form. There's two parts to this program. One is the tracking program, which includes the online applications as well as the online forms, and allows us to post in various places like LinkedIn and those types of things, which we are starting to include. The second portion of the program is the onboarding platform, which allows us to provide documentation to the individuals when we have them ready. So as soon as the Board approves somebody for hire, we can make these documents available. We can include things in there that we typically provide to new employees on a thumb drive, things like the collective bargaining agreement, their tax forms that they need to complete, information regarding benefits and those types of things. And when we initially supplied this to the Board, I had only a monthly number for the first portion at $249 per month. We have received now an annual price of $2,739 for that portion, and with the annual amount of $1,750 for the second portion. Both of those portions combined would be for an annual price of $4,489. The contract I've submitted after we received that as well allows us to terminate it anytime if, for some reason, we're not happy with the services, if there's some sort of problems. So with that, I'd ask for approval for the Human Resources Department to enter into an obligation with applicant pro for both the applicant tracking services and onboarding services in the total amount of $4,489 annually.
Any questions?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion that we purchase, make approval to purchase the applicant pro applicant tracking and onboarding software in the annual amount of $4,489.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have Planning and Zoning Department, and this is a rezoning request from general commercial to residential, multiple-family, high-density, located on the northeast corner of Hall Road and Heidenrick. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing regarding this rezoning request, and after hearing the information from the public, as well as reading the recommendation from the planner, planning consultant, the Planning Commission is recommending that this proposed rezoning be denied for the reasons that are outlined in the memo to the Board. I would suggest that whatever motion is made tonight, if we're going to deny this, those conditions are included if you're in agreement with what the Planning Commission has recommended. I should note that at the Planning Commission meeting, the petitioner did offer a conditional condition to the rezoning, and that had to do with the building height. Under R2H, it would allow a 10-story building on that property. They offered until limited to four stories, so just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you. Any questions? Did you wish to speak?
Good evening, Madam Supervisor, members of the Board. My name is Tom Callis. My address is 31350 Telegraph Road, Suite 201, in Bingham Farms, Michigan. I'm here this evening representing the petitioner, Selma Royal Village LLC. The client is here also. We're available to ask any questions. If the Board would like a summary or a presentation of our rezoning request, I'm willing to give that also. We did make a presentation at the public hearing in front of the Planning Commission. You know, basically, we're seeking to rezone the property from its current commercial use, which we feel is not marketable, and the market is saturated with such zoning to an R2H residential, multiple, high-density, in order to provide senior residential rental-type housing. There's a demand for such housing, especially along Hall Road. Such developments, both along Hall Road on the north side and south side, are at capacity. There's a demand for this. That segment of the population needs housing, affordable-type housing, to remain within the township and in that area. We did agree under the Michigan, there were some concerns at the Planning Commission public hearing from residents with respect to the height of the building, and so we did agree to limit, under the conditional zoning statute, the height of the building to four stories. Although the ordinance allows us to go up to 10 stories, we have agreed to limit it to four stories. We feel this is a proper area for this type of use. There is R2L zoning to the north of us. Immediately to the north is an office use. There's commercial all up and down Hall Road. The last thing Hall Road needs is more commercial uses. The market is saturated. Retail users come and go, whereas the use that we're requesting is in demand and very marketable. So, you know, it'll be a nice development. My client has developed other projects in the township. He also is a commercial developer and, you know, sees that it's not an area or a demand that is, you know, conducive right now, as opposed to what we're proposing, the senior rental housing. So with that in mind, we're here to answer any questions, and we would request that the requested rezoning from C2 general commercial to R2H residential, multiple, high-density be approved.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Van Tiflin, at what point did the Planning Commission deny the request? Was that before or after the building height?
It was after. He offered it during his presentation at the public hearing, and then the public all had a chance to speak, and then the Planning Commission acted at that point.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I may, we seem to, we seem to getting more and more of these requests to rezone from commercial to residential, and I believe there's even some more coming up in the future. So I took the time to really study the master plan, and I studied the master plan from 2002, and then the most recent one, I believe, is 2007. In the 2007 master plan, which we hired an expert to do that plan, although they suggest that it gets amended or revised or revisited every five years, it did indicate in that master plan that the idea of that plan was to project 20 years forward. And what the plan had indicated was that they did a balance of residential, industrial, and commercial to ensure that we not only have residential, but we're also servicing them, and we also have the industrial properties that are bringing in the tax dollars that we need. So if we continue to rezone to all this residential, we have a lot of people without a lot of services to offer them. My opinion is we have to have a balance of commercial and residential. We need, although you indicated that it's saturated, I don't know that it's saturated. I just think that there needs to be other unique ideas utilized in the commercial areas. We want this to be a community. We don't want to just house a bunch of residents and have nothing for them to do, for entertainment or for food and beverage or to do with their families. So I would recommend and make a motion to go with the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the rezoning request. General Commercial C2 to Residential Multifamily High Density R2H located on the northwest corner of Hall Road and Heinrich Road, permanent parcel 0833400019, because the request does not meet the character of the area, is inconsistent with the surrounding zonings and land uses, and is inconsistent with the master plan as mentioned by the Planning Commission.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay.
Thank you.
Very sorry, thank you. Next is another rezoning request, and this is General Commercial to Residential, Multiple-Family Medium Density. This is located on the northeast corner of 24 Mile and Hayes. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing regarding this request for this rezoning. After hearing comments from the public, as well as reading the recommendation from the planning consultant, they are recommending that the Township Board deny this request as well.
Thank you. Are there any motions?
Madam Chair, for the same reasons, I made the motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation to deny the rezoning request. General Commercial C2 to Residential Multifamily Medium Density R2 located on the northeast corner of 24 Mile Road and Hayes Road, Section 7, permanent parcel 0807300016, because the request does not match the master plan with the existing use being consistent with other areas of the master plan and the backlog of history done by various commissions and boards as to the proper amount of commercial in the township. As motioned by the Planning Commission, I motioned to deny that request as well.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith, I'm sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and it is denied also.
Thank you.
The next one is an extension of time, and this is the final preliminary plat for Harmony Acres Subdivision Number Four. This is also on 24 Mile, one quarter-mile east of Romeo Plank. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board. Planning Commission did consider this request for an extension of time. The department heads and the Planning Commission are recommending a one-year extension of time.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Van Tiflin on this? It's pretty routine, just an extension of one year?
One year.
Okay, thank you. Any motions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we have an extension of time in the amount of one year for the final preliminary plat of Harmony Acres Subdivision, parcel 0816-200-017.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries for an extension of one year. The next one is also an extension of time. This is the final preliminary plat for Wexford Meadows Subdivision on the east side of Heinrich Road, quarter of a mile east of 22 Mile. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board. Similar to the previous request, the Planning Commission did consider this request for an extension of time. Department heads, as well as the Planning Commission, is recommending a one-year extension.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we have an extension of time of one year for the final preliminary plat of Wexford Meadows Subdivision, permanent parcel 08-27-100-034.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Posey. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries also. The next one is a rezoning request for community facilities to residential, single-family. This is on the north side of 22 Mile Road and west of Card. Mr. Van Tiflin.
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the Board. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing regarding this matter, actually yesterday. After hearing comments from the public, as well as reading the recommendation from the planning consultant, they are recommending that this be approved. Just in the way of background on this piece of property, this is property that's owned by the township. It was actually purchased to try and solve a problem with regard to a adjacent development. This piece, as well as an adjacent piece, were part of a bigger development that was supposed to be developed as a subdivision, and if we hadn't had an economic downturn, we probably would have a subdivision out there today. At a certain point, the developer decided not to move forward with it, and a church ended up buying the property. The only caveat that the township had with the development of a church on that property was that there were two stub streets on the north end of the property and on the east side of the property that needed to be connected. The township wanted that to happen as part of the development. The church ended up entering into a contract with a developer to split off the north end of the property and develop that as a subdivision. Plans were submitted. There was a concern with regard to those plans and the stub street being left to the remaining property that the church was going to develop. The concern was if the property didn't develop as residential and we didn't have a stub street there, we could have a problem with a spot zone. Somebody could come in and say the township didn't leave a stub street, and therefore there was no intention for the township, by the township, to make that residential. So in an effort to, at that point, the church was trying to sell the property and market it as residential. We had previously rezoned it to community facility. Because the property was for sale, we encouraged both parties to get together and try and work something out to get that stub street in. That didn't work out. The township stepped in and bought the property in order to make sure that that stub street was constructed. The intention was always we'd negotiate consent judgment with that property owner, get the stub street in, and then sell the property. That development is done. We're now in a position where it's time to sell the property. We do want to rezone it back to, from community facility to single-family residential as it was originally intended. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, Madam Chair. Jim, we talked a little bit today and kind of wanted to ask some questions, just so that people in the audience and at home can hear this. This was, this was the only subject at the Planning Commission last night, I think, you know.
That is correct.
About 20, 25-minute meeting. Why, why now? I know that you said that this was always the plan, but the movement on this was pretty quick. We have a Planning Commission meeting last night that this item was put on tonight's agenda. We had no idea what the Planning Commission was going to say, either deny it or accept. Why so quick now when we've had that? Because we bought this property, what?
2015.
2015, okay. So why now? Why so fast? Why Planning Commission to us tonight?
Well, you know, right now, the property is sitting there, and we're actually paying taxes on the property, so it's costing us money to keep it, and it was always intended to be developed. So we've had some discussion, the Board at Board level and Department head level, about what is the process for selling the property. I think we've finally gotten, we've got a purchasing specialist, we've finally gotten to a point where, you know, we have a process in place to sell the property, and I think with the holidays and, you know, the Planning Commission meeting on the first meeting of December was canceled, we're just trying to facilitate it so that we can get this up there for sale, so that, you know, we can get it off the township's books, you know, hopefully sometime after the first of the year.
And that was my follow-up question. So it's not like we have a buyer right now that we're doing this quickly for.
We do not.
It's a question a resident had, and I think I talked to you, it was a legitimate question, I think, they had. So I wanted to ask you, and, you know, I think you did a good job with the special meeting, answering a lot of questions, and I trust your judgment, so. You know I was going to ask those questions, but I just wanted to kind of get that out there. So we don't have a buyer right now. It was moved quick because we don't have a December planning meeting. It's not even up for sale right now.
No, the process will be going forward, and I think, Tom, and some of the elected officials can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're going to have an appraisal done on the property and then put it, basically put it out for an RFP, so that we'll get, we'll know what they're planning on doing with the property, and we'll know how much we would get for the property in reading all the proposals. And then that would be brought back to the Board. The Board would make a decision as to which proposal to go with.
There's one more question. I knew I was going to ask you this, but I want to ask it in public, because if you asked the Planning Commission meeting last night, a resident came up who has had some interest in this property, or still does, has been involved, and brought up Mr. Buchi's name with this property. I just want to make it clear, this piece of property is not in the charges, at least that we know of at this point, which they were pretty long charges, but it wasn't involving this property. I just want to bring that up because the name was brought up by someone who has an interest in it last night.
I'm not aware that it is.
Okay.
Madam Chair, if I may, just to add on to that for Trustee Bassano, it may appear that it was expedited or moving quickly, but back in January, when we had Cynthia Carnes as our purchasing specialist, we had met with Dan Hickey to review all the properties owned by the township and where we were with them. Do we have a use or a need for them? Are we paying taxes on them? Is it something we need to move forward with and sell, or do we need to make a decision? When we were looking at all the land, we had to determine best use of parks. That was a piece of property that we owned. We met with Parks and Rec. They really didn't have any use for it. It wasn't the intent, because a park, if it was a park there, it would dead-end with the stub street there, so that wouldn't be ideal for traffic flow there. So we, this is something we discussed over a year ago. We had it in motion, and then we, unfortunately, Cynthia Carnes moved on, so we had to wait, we were waiting to get the purchasing specialist hired again, and since we have her now on board, she has now set up a process. We didn't really have one in place for selling of property, so a process is put in place, and what the question is as to do we have a buyer? It's going to go out for RFP, so it's open to any buyer to utilize that property.
And I think this discussion is good. It was good with the water rates last week. I got good feedback, and I think with, since we are the owner and since his name was brought up last night, I think it's good dialogue to have right now.
Okay, I hope that provided some extra clarification.
Anyone else?
That being said, I'll make a motion to request the rezoning of from community facilities to residential, single-family, located on the north side of 22 Mile Road and west of Card Road, Section 22, permanent parcel 0822400041.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Support. Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries and this property is rezoned. Under the fire department, we have authorization for contract modification for additional concrete.
Madam Supervisor, members of the board. I am the owner representative for the new public safety building. I'm requesting your approval this evening for the contract modification for additional foundation concrete. Per the design and construction specifications, the soil for the footings for the apparatus bays and the sheriff garage had to meet or exceed 2,000 pounds per square foot. There were five locations where the soil conditions did not meet that 2,000 pound per square foot requirement. The contractor was directed by the township's third-party consultant to dig the footings deeper until they were able to meet that 2,000 pound per square foot requirement. The additional depth resulted in an increased amount of concrete being used and the reports from the third-party testing company were attached for your review. The request was reviewed by AEW and Mr. Van Tifflin. Both are recommending approval. The total cost is $31,529. The amount will come out of the contingency line item. It will not result in an increase to the overall project. So at this time, I'm requesting your approval for the contract modification for additional foundation concrete in the amount of $31,529. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the contract modification for additional foundation concrete in the amount of $31,529.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue. Support. Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And we will move on now to request to replace one 2006 pickup. Chief Phillips?
Madam Supervisor, members of the board. I'm requesting your approval this evening to replace the last 2006 Chevrolet 2500 pickup that we have in the fire department. Actually, in July of 2018, you approved replacing this vehicle with the 2019 Dodge Ram 2500. The order for the vehicle was placed, the purchase order was generated. After waiting over a year for the vehicle, the dealer informed me that Chrysler had canceled the order and would not build a 2019. And there was no date as to when a 2020 model would be built. The 2006 has served as well, however, it is in need of replacement. The vehicle that I'm recommending is the second lowest bid vehicle, and that is after the Dodge, is the 2020 Ford F-250, four-door four-wheel drive vehicle with a snow plow. The plow is used in emergency situations to get the appropriate fire apparatus and ambulances down the streets that may not have been plowed yet from the county. It'll serve as a utility vehicle and be housed at station number one. Signature Ford in Perry has the state of Michigan bid and the Macomb County bid. Pricing was obtained utilizing that pre-approved bid. So therefore, it's my recommendation to purchase the vehicle from Signature Ford at a total cost of $42,261. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Anyone?
Madam Chair, if I may, will you be selling the 2006 Chevrolet?
Yes.
In what method will you use to sell it?
It's placed out unmitigated.
Okay. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to purchase these 2020 Ford F-250 in the amount of $42,261 from Signature Ford?
Yes.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers?
No.
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Thank you. Next, from the supervisor's office is reappointment of members to the Planning Commission, the Zoning Board of Appeals, and the Historical Commission. Usually, this is done on the last meeting of the year. However, last year, there were 42 items on the last meeting of the year and we decided to spread it out a little bit. So I am asking for your approval this evening. All of these people have been on these commissions or boards for a number of years. They all wish to continue. They all have done an exemplary job of it. So to the Planning Commission, I am asking to appoint, reappoint Richard Bentley. He's only been on the Planning Commission for one year, but that was to fill the position with someone who had resigned. So this now will be a three-year term and it will expire on December 31 of 2022. May I have a motion to that effect?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint Richard Bentley to the Planning Commission with a three-year term to expire on 12/31/2022.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Excuse me, Kathy, I'm sorry.
Kathy Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. The next one is Zoning Board of Appeals, and this is Ms. Dawn Slosson. She also has been on for a number of years. In fact, Ms. Posey has served with her for several years. And I think she's done a fine job also. Her term also would end December 31, 2022.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint Dawn Slosson to the Zoning Board of Appeals with a three-year term to expire on 12/31/2022.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Smith. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And the last two are to the Historical Commission, Peggy Arcardo, and her term would also end December 31, 2022.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint Peggy Arcardo to the Historical Commission with the three, with their three-year term expiring on 12/31/2022.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue.
No.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. And the last one is Milt Miller, and his term would also expire in 2022.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to reappoint Miller to the Historical Commission with the three-year term expiring on 12/31/2022.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, I believe we have the add-on?
If I may, real quick, I just want to remind all those that were just reappointed to these commissions and boards to stop by the clerk's office because we will need to swear you in as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. The next one is an extension of time for the senior facility on Hayes Road right by Randazzo's. Mr. Van Tifflin?
Yes, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. This request was made necessary by the early onset of winter. This particular project is just about complete, but they were not able to get all of the landscaping completed before the weather set in. So they're requesting an extension of time until June 1 of 2020. We've reviewed their request and are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, we had the pleasure of going to the ribbon cutting last week for this senior assisted living, and it was absolutely beautiful. What a great facility that we're going to offer to our seniors, and I would encourage everybody to check it out if they get the opportunity.
I agree to that. It's very, very nice. Are there any motions?
I'll make the motion to approve the extension of time for landscaping for Macomb assisted senior living until June 1, 2020.
Motion by Ms. Posey.
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries. Next, we have public comments, and this is on non-agenda items. If you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium, state your name, and remember you have a three-minute time limit.
My name is Renee Ellis Sumter. I'm at 48774 Bradford Drive. My husband and I were here October 23 at the meeting regarding our problem, as I explained to the board, was damage done to our driveway by Luigi's and Sons after replacing two sections of sidewalk. My husband and I did not stay for the entire meeting. I viewed the October 23 board meeting on video. Ms. Dunn made a statement regarding me and my husband, and I will quote her. "The gentleman and his wife that complained about the sidewalk. This was reviewed by Mr. Kelly, who's the coordinator of the sidewalk program, as well as Luigi Fernandi and Sons, who did the actual work. And they have both determined that a crack does not constitute replacement of a whole flag of cement. That's what I told them, and that's what they didn't like, and then they said I was rude." Unquote. Ms. Dunn, the statement that you made was not true. It was false regarding my husband and I. It was a lie. Ms. Dunn, number one, Luigi's, he did damage our driveway. He caused several cracks to our driveway. He also damaged a section of the sidewalk that was not marked for replacement. I have pictures. Number two, Ms. Dunn, there was not a them. You only spoke to me on the phone. When I spoke to you on October 14 in our conversation, I asked you, is there anyone above you? You said, and I quote, "Whatever." You went on to tell me about the board meetings. Then you went on to say, and I quote, "You asked me a question, I gave you an answer." Ms. Dunn, you said you were not rude to me on the phone, but you were. But that was my point on the October 23 meeting. My point coming here was to talk about what Luigi's and Sons did regarding our driveway. You mentioned a Mr. Kelly who was the coordinator of the sidewalk program. You said he did an investigation. I was never contacted by Mr. Kelly. My husband and I were, we were never contacted. If he was the investigator, we're the complainants. We made a complaint. And we were never contacted. We were never contacted by anyone from your office. I feel that our issue was sloughed off and that there was not a real investigation done. I believe what you did was you just took the word of what Luigi and Son did and just sloughed us off.
Anyone else?
Once again, I find myself talking about an agenda item that was already discussed after public comments on agenda items. I'd like to go back to item number 10, the request to approve the applicant, pro-applicant tracking and onboarding software.
I let you do that last meeting.
Okay, I just want to get clarification because what was voted for and what's in the agenda are different numbers. And I didn't hear an amendment to that number. Okay? What was voted on was $4,489. I just want to make sure the township is not going to get charged the $4,738.
We're not going to talk about that. You had your chance.
I couldn't have my chance. You guys voted on it after the agenda, after public comments. So how did I have my chance? I'm not wrong.
Mr. Parkinson, the motion reads the amount that the township, although it's different from the agenda, Mr. Assorti explained that he was able to negotiate a annual rate which decreased that amount. So the motion reads the correct amount, and that's what finance will follow up with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Good evening, Dave Piper, 15889 Van Meter. And Ms. Dunn, I hope not stealing your thunder again, but I just want to remind folks that I was part of the Historical Commission. We are going to have another scan event this Friday afternoon. So hopefully, people will bring their historical photos to be scanned. They will be scanned on the spot. You will be given your original back immediately, and you will also get a digital copy of your photo. We're trying to preserve the history of Macomb Township. There is a lady that is doing research for a book on Macomb Township, and she needs these pictures in order to get the book published. So we're encouraging everyone to come here Friday afternoon, the 22nd, between 1:00 and 3:30, and we will scan those documents very happily for you. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one? Then we'll move on to trustees' comments.
Yes, Madam Chair. I want to start out my comments with your permission. Jim knows I'm going to ask him a question. Is it okay if I ask our engineering department a question about our master plan? There is a lot of important items that we voted on tonight. There's a lot of important items at the Planning Commission. And I see us up here, I see you as a consultant, I see the Planning Commission constantly using the master plan as justification of us having to make decisions. Some of the decisions that we make for residential new subdivisions, what some residents don't understand is if it's zoned that way and someone owns that property and they're in that business, there's not a lot, I mean, we could try to stop them, but we're going to end up in court. So, my question is, in 2017, we talked about, during the joint commission's meeting, about revisiting our master plan. As Ms. Posey said, we, you know, it's a 2007 document that I think they voted on in 2008. And now, the recommendation is to revisit a master plan every 10 to 25 years. I think Ms. Posey said 12 to 20. But with a growing community like us, we've grown by a third since 2008. Where are we in that process of, that we talked about in 2017 of revisiting our master plan?
When Mr. Maher was here, he and his assistant were working on it. The number that I heard last, I think, was 40 or 50% complete on getting the document updated. Obviously, with him leaving, that has kind of put this on hold. He is not able to work on, he's working for us part-time, but that's mainly doing plan reviews and recommendations to the board and to the Planning Commission and ZBA. So, until we actually get a consultant or planning, and/or a planning director on board, I think that's going to have to sit. We, the Planning Commission has been talking about it, about how important it is. They recognize it, and as soon as we have people, you know, in place to work on that, it'll start again.
Thanks for that latitude, Madam Chair, because I do think it's important to give information out. I can tell you that most of the people I felt that came to the meeting on the water rate, I never got a chance to say thank you. I never knew when it was our time to talk and when we were kind of concluding. It was a long meeting, so, thank you. I do think that you're a voice in this township that people may not always agree all the time with what they're being told, but I think their trust that you're coming from a solid foundation, solid background. You have your data and you come from a point of expertise. And I think getting these things out there to the public more and talking about these things is going to be beneficial, and I like to hear that positive feedback. I really, really do. So, thanks, Madam Chair, again for letting me ask him a question. Second of all, one of the things I would like to do, and I don't need an answer tonight, but as a board, I would like us to look at when exactly we vote on closed session on the agenda, how we vote. I know we're going to have a vote to go in closed session, but if we ever voted not to go in closed session and it was a topic that the public then would see us discuss in the open as a public body with resident input, that, you know, we, if we ever voted not to go in a closed session and that went open, public would not have an opportunity to talk during agenda items only to that or during public comments, not knowing if we're going in closed session or not. And, because I have some questions about tonight's closed session. But, third of all, actually, I do want to follow up with, I hope we do get some follow-up with our resident about the driveway. I don't know all the particulars. I learned a lot about the water rates. Hopefully, maybe I'll, maybe I should, as a trustee, should have looked into this a little bit more. But, you know, and I'm, my beliefs that government has a lot of limited, should have limited responsibilities, and one of them is to protect property. And if we did something through one of our programs to damage somebody's property, not us, we didn't do it, but if our consultant didn't, they're ignoring it. I don't know if they are. Sometimes I've investigated, all of us have, have investigated concerns, and it's not quite quite what we're hearing, but if there was some damage done and it's not being recognized, we as a governmental unit should protect our residents' property the best we can. But the last thing I do, I hope everybody, or the last thing I want to say is, I hope everybody has a happy Thanksgiving. We do have a lot in this community to be thankful for. We do have a lot of blessings out there when you really look around. Might not always see it at a board meeting or a water rates meeting or a planning commission meeting, but I'm very thankful I live in this community. So, thanks, Madam Chair.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I would just like to reiterate what Mr. Bucci, excuse me, Mr. Busso.
Okay, thank you.
Major faux pas, sorry about that. Just, everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving and enjoy your family. That's what it's about. Thank you.
You're okay.
Then we'll move on to treasurer's comments.
Yes, I was very fortunate to attend a planning class yesterday, and because Mr. Busso brought it up, I'll touch on it. I'm going to be meeting with the supervisor to let her know what we learned in that class. But the master plan is more or less your bible that you go by, and it should be used, we use it all the time. It should be looked at yearly, and majorly every three years is what they're suggesting. So we are behind on that, and hopefully we'll be catching up pretty soon. Also, I want to let the residents know that their winter tax bill should be delivered around December the 2nd, because the 1st is on a Sunday, so December the 2nd is the first day that they would be having mail, so that we always plan for the 1st of December. So if you do not receive your bill that first week, please contact our office, because we can't guarantee the mail that it would be delivered, but that is our, that's when it goes to the, to the post office. Also, I want to remind people that the Great Lakes Water Authority has a RAP program that helps residents pay for their water. You can find information on that on their website, as well as on our water website. There's a link to that. If they're having trouble paying their water bills, that's available for residents. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, did you have anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
Okay. Clerk's comments?
Bear with me, it's a little long, but it's informative to all our voters. So tonight, we approved the purchase of new absentee ballot envelopes. I would like to provide some additional information with regards to the redesign of the absentee voter ballot envelopes, also known as mail-in voting. According to the Bureau of Elections, the previous design was encountering more and more issues with the United States Postal Service and sometimes the misdirection of ballots. The primary purpose of this redesign was to prevent those issues and to prevent the disenfranchisement of voters. The new design has a more modern look and feel, including a few small details that should have big impact on voters properly returning their ballot and process efficiencies. This includes, the voter's signature is now on the backside of the envelope, the side they will see when sealing the envelope. November pilot jurisdictions noted a significant decrease in unsigned envelopes. The ballot label will be on the backside of the envelope, allowing staff issuing ballots and election inspectors processing ballots on election day to view the ballot number without flipping over the envelope. Clear language, when not prescribed by law, to explain delivery options. Coloring for outgoing and return that allows us to train USPS to know that the blue envelope should be going to the voter and the green envelope returning to the clerk. Other states are adopting the same color scheme, which will help with ballots being sent outside of Michigan as well. A smaller size, which has been requested by the United States Postal Service, as the former size was the maximum for first-class mail. This allows for better automation and easier handling by carriers. The Bureau of Elections requests that old stock be destroyed and that the new design be rolled out in 2020, beginning with the presidential primary. The new design does require a smaller secrecy sleeve. These items purchased for the presidential primary will be reimbursed as part of the reimbursement process. Careful consideration has been given to the new designs, and with the anticipated increase in absentee voting that we are expecting after the passage of proposal 18-3 last November. I will continue to educate our voters through meeting and public service announcements prior to the presidential primary election on March 10th. Change is difficult for most, and we are all accustomed to be familiar with that manila envelope that comes in the mail that signifies your absentee voter ballot has arrived. So we are going to continue to do public service announcements to train everybody's brain to recognize now that the envelope is going to be different. It's a big change for us as well, so we're going to do everything we can to make sure we educate and assist our voters with this big change. But in going forward, I think it will help us in an efficient manner in the office. Outside of all that information, I hope everybody has a wonderful Thanksgiving and enjoy your time with your family.
Thank you. You know what happens after Thanksgiving? So today, since it was such a beautiful day.
Black Friday?
Since today was such a beautiful day, the facilities and grounds department, with the assistance of the fire department, the fire truck, they were out hanging up wreaths and stringing lights, getting ready for Christmas. As you all know, Santa comes in a very special way, right outside the front door, and then he visits with the children, the good boys and girls in our community. So I'm inviting you to dress warm and come here on Tuesday, December 3rd, at 6:30 p.m. to welcome Santa to McComb Township. Don't forget, write it down. Come join us, it's always a fun time. That's all I have this evening. Everyone have a wonderful holiday with your family, drive safe, be careful, and don't eat too much turkey. Now, we only have one thing to discuss in closed session, that is a written legal opinion for Meadowbrook invoices. Is there a motion to adjourn to closed session?
So I'll make a motion that we adjourn to closed session.
Motion by Ms. Goodhue?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Nevers.
So Madam Chair, since we had support, we can have discussion now at this point. I have concerns with going in some ques, I have some questions about us going into closed session right now, and if we are going into closed session for permissible reason under the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Keep in mind, since I've been on this board twice, we have faced legal action. One time, the, both, both times, I was advised that we were okay. Okay? One time, a judge said we violated Open Meetings Act, and I'm not sure if I can talk about the other one up here or not. So, I want, I need to ask some questions before I can go into closed session. So, the action requested on the agenda item was discussion of a written legal opinion regarding invoices received for insurance-covered services from Meadowbrook Insurance Agency, closed session per MCL 15.26H. 15.26H is, says that we can go into closed session outside of some very, very narrow other, otherwise narrow reasons permissible to go there. It says to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute. So before I even vote, I need to maybe get some questions clarified from our general counsel. So, the first question I have, to make sure that I can vote in good conscience to go into closed session, are the invoices from Meadowbrook Insurance Agency available under FOIA?
Are the invoices themselves? Yes.
Okay. So are the invoices attorney-client privilege?
Those invoices are not, they're not, because they don't.
Okay. So are we receiving a written legal opinion about a litigation strategy from our attorney, or is our general counsel giving us a written opinion about, about policy? Just because something's in writing from attorney doesn't necessarily mean it's a written legal opinion.
I'm giving you a written legal opinion.
About litigation strategy?
No, that would be a different subsection under the closed session portion. We're going under subsection H, which is information that's exempt by state or federal law.
Okay, there has been case law in Michigan that courts have said that, they've explained a couple of times where boards, public bodies, that's what we are, is a public body, have violated OMA, and they've said twice it would be illogical to construe the attorney-client privilege exemption as authorizing a public body to evade the open meeting requirements of the OMA merely by involving a written opinion from an attorney in the substance of discussion of a matter of public policy. I am afraid that's what we're doing right now.
I have no intention of discussing public policy. I intend on speaking to the board in closed session regarding my legal opinion on our rights and obligations of the township relative to invoices that were provided from Meadowbrook Insurance Company to the township.
Solid questions ahead, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, if I may, Mr. Assorti, what would be the reason that that couldn't be discussed in open session?
Because it involves the rights and obligations of the township, whether or not we have a contract, we have a contract with Meadowbrook Insurance Company, and involves our rights and responsibilities and what decisions you want to make regarding those rights and responsibilities. My opinion about the township's rights under that, under that contract.
I understand trustee Busso's concern, and I think we all agreed as a board that we would be very careful with allowing loopholes or the ability for a weak link in any process or guidelines that we follow that would allow for future lawsuits against the board. I know that some were very upset that they were named in one of the recent lawsuits. I think it would be helpful if we could read the legal written opinion prior to getting to the meeting to ensure us, as we're voting to go into closed session, that we're confident that it is permissible and it meets the criteria to go into closed session. Without knowing what we're discussing and based on what it reads just on the agenda, it doesn't give us the confidence that we're going in there to discuss something that follows the guidelines and the criteria. So, I personally would recommend, I know there's a motion in support to go into closed session, but if this isn't something that's crucial that needs to be reviewed this evening, it would be helpful that we could review it before we come back to the next meeting and feel confident that going into closed session, that it's all our opinion, that it meets the criteria to go in, so that nobody feels responsible or misled in voting in favor to go. Just my suggestion.
Madam Chair, I would have to agree with Ms. Posey on this, because all I get is this two-line sentence, if there's going to be a legal opinion, and you brought that up, that's a very, I would appreciate that if I could read it first prior to going into closed session. So if I do have questions, I have good questions that I can bring up during the closed session.
Just so we're clear, I have no problem with that. I proposed that some time ago, that we issued that process. I'm simply following the procedure that's been in place around here for, for quite some time. I, I would encourage that. In fact, I think I've made comments several times that I would like to present this to, there's some of these things, when I give opinions, you don't even necessarily have to go into closed session to talk about them. They're just simply information that you have, and I have no problem disseminating those documents to you with an understanding that they are subject to attorney-client privilege and can't be disclosed, for instance, on social media, that type of thing. So, I have no, I don't, I don't think, the issues that are relative to this are issues that have been brewing for a year now, so I don't think one more meeting's going to take, and I'd be happy to, I'll send these out tonight, and you guys can look at them, and we can push it till the next meeting, that'd be fine.
I would appreciate that.
And Madam Chair, and just to comment on that, we've obviously gone down a different path when it comes to lawsuits against the township, so I think this just allows us to all be informed and protect ourselves on the vote. We are the ones that get named in those lawsuits, so I think that would be a great path to go forward and give us the opportunity to make sure that we're confident. And we all have our own interpretation. So I would like to amend the motion to postpone the closed session to December 4th.
Yeah, I think you have a motion in a second. I think you need to vote to deny the motion, and then you can take another motion at that point.
Okay.
All right, there's a motion to go into closed session. Ms. Posey, would you call the roll?
Yes, Madam Supervisor, Treasurer Goodhue?
No.
Trustee Nevers?
No.
Trustee Busso?
No.
Trustee Smith?
No.
Clerk Posey?
No.
Supervisor Dunn?
No.
Now we need a motion.
I would like to make a motion to postpone closed session to December 4th with regards to a written legal opinion for Meadowbrook invoices.
Can we say contingent upon getting the subject nature in the opinion?
Upon receiving the information prior to the next meeting.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by?
Smith.
Ms. Smith. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and this will be postponed for two weeks. That concludes the business for this evening. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Ms. Posey?
Support.
Supported by Ms. Goodhue. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. That motion carries, and we are adjourned.